Good evening, welcome to the August 5th, 2024 Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call our meeting to order if we would. Let's have a roll call. Okay, if you would, stand with me and Commissioner Ward is going to do an implication.
Our heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance tonight and your love for this county. Forgive us for the decisions we have made that have maybe not been correct in your eyes and guide us so that we will do what is best. Amen.
Thank you. If you would remain standing, I'm going to ask Ramaya Monroe to come up from Rhodes High School and introduce yourself and lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. My name is Ramaya Monroe. I go to JH Rhodes and I'm a 12th grade student. Currently, I am in many organizations, including HOSA. I'm an active member in mock trial and right now I'm actually interning at ECU Health, working in the OR, kind of trying to open my doors for when I eventually graduate because I'm really interested in the pharmaceutical sciences. So, thank you for having me this evening and at this time, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. A motion and a second, please vote. Madam Manager, do we have any public addresses to the board?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay. Next up is Items for Report. I'll invite Bryant Buck up from the Mideast Commission to report.
Good evening. It's Jeremy Smith, Commissioners. I'm Bryant Buck, as you mentioned, the Executive Director of the Mideast Commission. Thank you all for having me this evening. I'd like to thank you for allowing the Mideast Commission to serve the county through our various programs, including economic development, working with Ms. Kelly Andrews, our transportation planning, working with Commissioner McGalhorn, and thank you for the long meeting we had last week. That was quite the episode and we made a lot of good progress there. So, thank you for being on that RPO. And also aging, working with the Council on Aging, including Rich Zach and the great programs and work he does, you know, for our seniors, including recognizing our county-appointed representatives on our Workforce Board. I want to thank you for allowing them. And for allowing Commissioner Perkins-Williams to be on the Mideast Commission Executive Board. Ms. Perkins-Williams is a valuable member and most recently, we assisted her with an initiative for her nonprofit by helping with park design and other aspects of that. We also worked with the East Carolina folks, as well as other various folks throughout Greenville, and putting together, I think, a pretty good plan for a marketing strategy to help with the Northern Pitt Initiative. So, certainly appreciate the opportunity to do that. The reason I'm here this evening, one of the reasons, is a brief little update, but I realize we are both monitoring our workforce development activities and goals and have with me our Workforce Development Director, Ms. Jenny Bowen, who will provide an update and overview of the data related to this past fiscal year. We've all been trying to keep a pulse on this to make sure that the programs run smoothly, that we are serving the citizens throughout our five county region and of course, Pitt County, and we pride ourselves in serving all of those who request or in need of workforce assistance and other services, including individuals and business needs alike. So, without further ado, Ms. Jenny Bowen is going to give us a brief update on where we stood in our last fiscal year data and myself or her will be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Ms. Jenny?
Good evening. So, you should have two handouts. We'll start with the first blue and gray one. This is the regional snapshot of our activities from last program year. Our program year runs much like yours, July to June. So, you can just get a feel here for some of the highlights. We served over 9,000 job seekers last year. We placed over 6,800 job orders. I'm sure if you're out and about in your community, you are seeing and hearing that everybody is in need of workers. And so, we're seeing some great strides in the increases of folks coming in and utilizing some of our services. Also, the amount that we help with tuition assistance, that is one of the parts of the programs that we do operate, as well as the dollar amounts that we spend and other things that are the supportive wraparound services that are required for those individuals to attend training. So, that could be things like transportation expenses, childcare. If you've got a nursing student, they have to have certain uniforms, certain equipment, all those things we potentially provide. You'll also see the incumbent worker grants. Those are grants that are provided directly to employers. And basically, what they do is help the employer offset the cost of scaling up their staff they already have. So, you know, we want not only to help them hire them, but we want to help them train them and then we want to help them with retaining. And so, a lot of those dollars are utilized to help individuals skill up their existing workforce, which creates those positions, entry-level positions to fill into. You'll see the dollars that we provided to our youth for incentives and those are things for things they've completed. It could be they've completed their high school diploma, they've completed their career readiness certificate, they've met what we call a measurable skill gain, so they've increased their skills in some area. You'll see that we served 14,000 business services were provided last year and $78,000 was provided in work-based learning services. And so, those dollars are dollars that are directly either paid to the participant for work experience or in our on-the-job training program where we reimburse the employer up to 50% of that person's wage while they're training them on that job. Again, with the labor market the way it is right now, we're constantly looking for ways that we can help our employers. So, this actually helps them hire someone who might not be the perfect fit for them, but they're somebody they're willing to train to learn on that job. And so, we help offset some of the expense for that training. And then again, the incumbent worker grants also help offset to retain them after that first six months. Are there any questions about the regional sheet?
Any questions?
Yep. You know, I have some. I have some, I have some. And I'd like to, first of all, thank the two of you for coming tonight and sharing this with the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. As a member of the Commission, I'd like very much for them to know the numbers of youth that come from Pitt County, how much money you get for those programs as relates to youth and adult, what are they, young adults, adult, is youth and adults, right?
Youth, adult, dislocated worker, yes ma'am.
Yes. So, hopefully you can share that information so that they will know because the amount of money that you get, we're interested in Pitt County right now.
Yes, ma'am. And so, your second page of your handout is review that is strictly for Pitt County. And so, we're providing, this is the data for last program year. So, you can see the number of individuals that were served, how many of those were placed in the work-based learning, so the on-the-job training, the number that were in classroom training, and then the amount that we actually spent directly on participants. So, that could be paying for their funding for training, the supportive services we talked about, other things. And that is the breakdown for Pitt County. I will tell you that because of the increase in the number of individuals we have requesting certain trainings that are much more expensive than we normally pay for, some of our numbers as far as those in classroom training has definitely trickled down because when we're paying $4,000 for somebody to go to get a credential versus paying 800 at the community college, that's a big difference in that cost ratio. So, we're already working on for the new year, trying to better spread those out so that we're getting a better mix of individuals and not, we've had a huge interest, we had a waitlist last year at some point with over 200 people on it, and I will tell you that 75% of those want to go to CDL. And so, while we need truck drivers, most of those trainings are about $4,000 apiece. And so, that gets very cost prohibitive with the funds that we receive. So, the numbers do look a lot lower. They have increased year over year. We did continue with our contract and we've already seen new enrollments starting to go up this year. Just like what we've seen, what we just talked about in the local labor market, our providers have had the same struggles, just like I'm sure you as a county have had as far as attracting talent and retaining talent. So, there has been some turnover and that with ours is probably similar to what you're seeing with your DSS folks. It's a long training period. It's a lot, it's federal compliance, and so that has dampened things a little bit, but right now, everybody, they are fully staffed for this county. Also, you'll see the next set of numbers below, and I'm just going to give you some averages. So, our federal performance measures, so we federally, they don't track how many people we serve, they only care about our outcomes. They want to make sure that we've spent the funds that we've been given, and we did spend all of our PY22 funds and are currently in process on PY23. They want to make sure that we're meeting our targets as far as the outcomes from that. So, if you look at that employed second quarter after exit, so once we stop providing services, someone has retained employment, completed their education, retained employment, we exit them and they count out up to six months. An average of 75% of those people retain that job in a six-month period. And then of those individuals, another six months passes by and 71% of those have still retained employment. And so, overall, that's a pretty good return, pretty good return on investment. You'll also see that 53% of those have obtained a credential while they were in training. Keep in mind, that only counts the one who completed. So, if we have somebody in a two-year program, they might not have counted yet, they'll count when they actually complete. And then 51% had that measurable skill gain. And again, that's where they've gained some new skill, they've either gotten a credential or they've gained a new skill while they were in the program. The next set of numbers are going to be the numbers of people that we see at our NC Works Career Center. So, the NC Works Career Center is our flagship product. While we receive specific program dollars for youth, adult, and dislocated worker, the Workforce Boards are also tasked with overseeing the NC Works Career Center operations, so that also falls under the Board. These are just Pitt County numbers. Over 12,000 individuals were served last year. I know last week, we had a hiring event for one employer and we had over 300 people in one day. So, if you hear that people aren't looking for work, that's obviously not always the case. We had 300 people in one day. We had 1600 new individuals that registered for our services last year, 10,000 services just in Pitt County that were provided to your employers. So, that could be helping them find work, that can be workers, that can be all the other services we talked about. And then we entered over 5,500 job orders for individuals or for those employers are out there looking and we're trying to match this 12,000 to those 5,000 jobs posted. Also, I wanted to note, we did share a little success story on the bottom. Sometimes it's always good to put a person and a name and a face to an outcome that happened with our program. So, I'll let you read that, I will not review that unless you'd like. I also want to note that we do also have, we did receive an increase in funds for this new program year that started July 1st. So, we're looking to see these numbers grow. And as far as hiring events, we have 15 hiring events scheduled across the region in the next 60 days. So, the employers are looking, the job seekers are looking, and we're just busy trying to make those matches.
How much did you say you got Middies for the dislocated worker and how much for the youth?
The total we received for this-
The amount that Middies get for those two, for Pitt County alone.
For the total for this year, we received-
These numbers are not up here, are they?
No, ma'am, they're not for the new year, these are the numbers for last year.
That was what my question was about because-
Okay. I can certainly get those back to you. I didn't bring the allocation numbers.
Because this looked like very small, one of the reasons we've had discussions about the numbers, what you receive and how, what you serve as it relates to Pitt County alone, we have concern about that. And so, I'm not seeing it in this, in this, not saying you don't, but I'm not seeing it here. And I know that there's been times that monies have been here and they were not utilized and they had to go back, go somewhere. So, I wanted this Board to be aware of those numbers and if you don't have them, I don't know what to say. But thank you.
Any other questions from any other Commissioners?
Okay, great. Thank you all for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Matt Gibson with our Legislative Goals Submission.
So, it's time to submit our legislative goals to NCACC. So, I wanted to provide a little refresher about the process, go through some of our prior goals and then some proposals we've received from some of the department heads moving forward. So, if you look at the slide and I guess, so the first slide kind of takes you through the process. So, every two years, we submit to NCACC our goals, so they're engaging in process to determine their legislative goals that they're going to submit to the legislature in the process moving forward. So, this process, it invites input from all county commissioners, county officials, stakeholders. They try and be as inclusive as possible in this process. Proposals should be in the form of a policy statement and include background information on the impetus or motivation of the proposal. Next is a timeline, and so the Legislative Goals Submission process starts in May, from May through September, all of these individuals, these stakeholders are submitting their county goal proposals to NCACC. In mid-September, the Steering Committee reviews those goals and then they vote on those goals proposals. These Steering Committees range, there's about 10 committees, 10-plus committees, they range from general government to tax and finance, health and human services, things of that nature. Those Steering Committees then submit, after they vote on their goal proposals, they submit it to the Legislative Goals Committee, who reviews and makes recommendations. Those recommendations are forwarded to the membership at the Goals Conference, the Legislative Goals Conference, which as you can see, happens between, or happens November 14th through the 15th. So, the prior goals for NCACC, the 23, 24 prior goals, as you can see there, I've listed the top priority goals. Seek legislative funding and other efforts to expand broadband to unserved and underserved areas. As you remember, that was one of our goals as well, that we established as one of Pitt County's goals. Next, seek additional funding or additional funding source, revenue source to address public school and community college capital needs. Also revisions to the need-based public school capital fund. So, again, that's your lottery funds that are people, are schools petition for and they're farmed out to different counties that need more capital funds or funds for their public schools. Third was the support, to support expansion of Medicaid and funding to expand county workforce and necessary infrastructure. You'll see the asterisk at the bottom, I've included at your place settings the list of, or the full list of the legislative agenda from 23, 24 that lays out all of the goals adopted by NCACC. The next slide is the goals that Pitt County adopted. As you can see, we've addressed those before. What I included in there at the bottom was the county-administerated building, that was not actually a adopted goal by the county, but both at county advocacy days and the legislative breakfast, we brought it to our local delegation for their support to try and move forward with a new county-administered building. These are some, the next couple of slides are proposed legislative goals from the department heads, so an email was sent out by myself to all departments asking for any input that they might have for these legislative goals moving forward, and we've received some feedback moving forward. So, planning, first they're asking for NCDOT street acceptance for road maintenance, and this is just to alleviate the problem that we have with orphan roads. So, our past legislative goals was maintenance bonds, and that will alleviate the problem, but this is another way to alleviate in case they do not move forward with maintenance bonds. The other one was funding for replacement housing. The majority of replacement housing now is done through the ARPA funding. As you know, that funding source will run out, and so they're asking for an additional funding source to continue with replacement housing. Economic development, they submitted the request for funding for site development as well as investment in workforce innovation. And lastly was tax, this is posting of notices electronically. So, right now Guilford County is the only county that can post their notices electronically, that was done through a local act. There's been other counties that have tried but have failed through house bills, like for example, there was a group of counties in the Northeast quadrant that tried to do this, but that has failed as well. But tax proposed this, it would alleviate funding or costs on these departments that need to post, whether it's weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly. So, this was a proposal by tax, but this could go for the planning department or just any notices that would need to be published by our government. And so, that was short and sweet. I know you all understand the process, but is there any questions or directives? And if not, I have an additional slide that would have kind of a proposal of some recommendations.
Any questions for council?
And so, this is kind of the proposal that I've laid out and we can adjust it as needed. As you can see, the majority of the first seven are what we've had before. I think they are still relevant today, the general revenue protection, pose unfunded mandates, of course, fully fund state responsibilities for public education, broadband, I think we've made great efforts in that, but continue to have that as a goal. Water and sewer infrastructure, family justice center, authorized maintenance bonds for subdivision streets. We would now include, formally include, the county administration building. We would include funding for replacement housing and lastly, posting of notices electronically.
Anything the Commissioners would like to add?
Like the mid and doc.
Okay, got a motion to adopt. And a second? We need to vote electronically?
Yeah, I could get back up there. Thank you, Matt.
So, you want us to vote electronic?
Yep, please.
Go ahead, get your screen up. Double beep.
I didn't know if it was up and ready.
It's Babe Ruth over here.
Well, let me hit it again. Commissioner Ward?
Oh, that didn't hurt me, yes ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. And while we have a second, I'd also like to recognize Representative Laura Steen-Brown. Thank you for being with us this evening. And we will move to our next item for report. Madam Manager?
Yes, a few items on your manager's report this evening, and then I have two that are not listed. The first are your meeting dates, August 19th and September 6th at 6:00 PM in this meeting room. Also, a reminder for those who are attending this week that the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference is August 8th to 10th in Forsyth County. So, before you leave, please keep an eye on the weather to see if there are any adjustments related to Hurricane Debbie, but otherwise, it is currently on schedule as planned. Item C is to let you know that tomorrow at 4:00 PM, we'll do the ribbon cutting for the new district courtroom and small claims court at the Pitt County Courthouse to cut that ribbon and allow those spaces to be open for use. They came out very, very nicely, on time and within budget. So, I'm pleased that Tim Corley was able to see those projects through, and I know the folks at the courthouse are very grateful. Please join us if you can. Item D, with the transition of the Animal Services Director, we had a lot of community feedback and we allowed a public comment session at the last Animal Services Advisory Board meeting, and one of the things that we heard repeatedly is a desire for public input sessions. And so, we've gone ahead and scheduled two public input sessions for Animal Services on August 20th and August 22nd from 5:00 to 7:30 PM, one north of the river, one south of the river, in the Ag Center Auditorium and the Community Schools and Recreation Large Multipurpose Room. The purpose of those input sessions will be to hear the community's expectations for the programs and facilities at the Animal Services Department, and some folks might also want to share what they find important in the next director moving forward. And so, those are scheduled, you are welcome to attend, not required to attend, and the Animal Services Advisory Board will attend as they are able, will record all of that feedback for the Animal Services Advisory Board, and they can guide the department accordingly based on that feedback. Moving next door to Animal Services, it's Farmer's Market Week, August 3rd to 10th that we are in, and lots of exciting things going on. This past Saturday was the Farmer's Market Week kickoff with a tote bag giveaway, photo booths, children's activities, and Travelin' Tom's Coffee Truck. We're still having a successful Tuesday evening market at the Farmer's Market, and so this Tuesday will be Tasty Tuesday. Pitt County Wellness Team is going to provide healthy cooking lessons utilizing the market's fresh produce. From 3:00 to 5:30, we'll have Community Garden Coordinator Katie Winslow having an engaging seed planting activity at the Farmer's Market using the recipe's main ingredients.
Are we getting that out today?
We did a press release and there's been notification on social media as well, but we did a formal press release earlier this week, on July 31st.
That was a good crowd out there Saturday, I was out there about two hours.
Great.
Very good crowd.
Saturday attendance has been terrific, and then we'll do the final celebration Saturday, August 10th, with food trucks, recipe tastings, another tote bag giveaway, kids' activities, photo booths, and more. We've done a full digital campaign to advertise this as well through our Public Information Office. Everything is free and open to the public. So, we're excited about that for Farmer's Market Week. Then I have two things to add. One is just to note, the National Association of Counties, NACO, has made their appointments to different Steering Committees, and I wanted to make the Board aware that Commissioner Perkins-Williams has been appointed to six different committees.
They wear me out.
They wear you out. She is on the Future Tech Subcommittee, the Information Technology Standing Committee, International Economic Development Task Force, the Membership Standing Committee, Programs and Services Standing Committee, and Resilient Counties Advisory Board. And then Mike Taylor, our Chief Information Officer, was also reappointed and serves on the County Technology Advisory Committee, that's the CTAC, the Future Tech Subcommittee, and the Information Technology Standing Committee. So, I'm pleased to have this engagement. There may be others who are appointed to different committees, but these were the two letters that I received this week and wanted to thank you for your engagement in that organization.
It sounds to me like Ms. Mary's got too much time to-
I didn't even ask for them.
You gotta be retired.
Did not ask.
Who all the-
I didn't ask.
My last item for report is I wanted to say that it is official and confirmed that Pitt County, North Carolina, will be the host of the 2025 North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference.
Hip, hip, hooray, there you go.
So, I had mentioned to you that that was coming, we expected it to happen. Kevin Leonard called with the official word on Friday, and you'll be receiving written writing from him after this annual conference. When you get to the conference this week, you'll see a table, our Convention and Visitors Bureau will have a table set up inviting people to Pitt County with different giveaways. Rachel from, it's Little League Softball World Series week, so Andrew would have been there, but he'll be back with the world, here with the World Series, and Rachel will be with us from Visit Greenville.
How many years has it been since we hosted the last one?
Well, this will be our third. I think the last one was in-
2015.
Two, 10 years.
Yeah, 10 years ago, yeah, that was ago.
So, this will be our third shot at it. It will be an incredible conference right here at the Convention Center, and we will have a lot of work to do, but it is confirmed and they're coming on our way, and we wanted you to hear it before they announced it at the annual conference.
It'll be a hard act to follow after the last one. That was a good one.
I thought it was too.
It was. I think that's why they're asking us to do it again. That's all that I have for my report.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you, Madam Manager. I entertain a motion for item for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. We'll move on to items for decision. Madam Manager?
Yep, your first one is an appointment to the Pretrial Services Advisory Board. It's being recommended that you nominate Ashley Stalls to the Pretrial Services Advisory Board for a term beginning August 1st, 2024, approving an exception to the board appointment policy, and that's because Ms. Stalls would serve in her professional capacity as a Pitt County magistrate in the spot allocated for a magistrate, but she currently resides in Martin County, so that's, will warrant the exception. And these last four seats have been difficult to fill, so I would recommend her nomination.
Oh, sure, who?
Second.
You've got a motion and a second, please vote.
I like the fact that we get a female.
And you have another one, Madam Manager?
It is recommended that you reappoint Charlotte Ann Alexander to the Animal Services Advisory Board for an additional term to expire June 30th, 2027. She is currently serving as chair and is eligible for reappointment.
Motion, I hear a second?
Second.
Did I hear a second? I did. I thought I heard something down there.
I made a motion, if somebody else knew it, I would-
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Tom did it.
Thank you.
I'll vote.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed that last meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I was working.
All right, I'll start with my right. Commissioner Ward, you have any comments?
No comment, thank you very much.
Man, Commissioner Dunleavy?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Coulson?
No comments.
Commissioner Higgins?
No comment.
Anybody's got any comments tonight? Commissioner White?
No comment.
Commissioner McGlocklin?
No comment.
I have some.
Okay.
All right, first of all, I want to bring up the issues of the guns, the, in the community and subdivisions and close. I've asked the county manager to look into it, I've gotten a lot of issues pointed out to me, and as much as yesterday, one of the commissioners from Aiden was talking about guns in the community, and how people were shooting, or practicing, target practicing in a heavily populated area. So it brings some concern because it seems in one neighborhood, the activity is escalating. Matter of fact, the lady had to jump between her husband and the door to keep physical confrontations from happening.
We tried to stop that before.
Yeah.
We were-
You brought it, Tom.
We were, yeah, we were slamming-
Yep.
Well, it's an issue now, it, this is two, this one in one neighborhood been going on quite regularly, and another one coming from Aiden, I got to put one of the commissioners who included, I think I sent it to you about that, so we might need to revisit that. There was a meeting in my community last week, and was our pack house, even though I was not invited, I did talk with planner, our planning director, Jonas Hill, and I did talk with the manager about it. It was on roads and highways and development in the community, that it seems as if we did not come up with anything. And my last comment, I'd like to offer a motion. In recognition of the service that our sheriff has done, and she has had GED program in, which means that it's rehabilitation for those people who are incarcerated and for the inmates, I move that we increase the salary of the Pitt County Sheriff by 2%, increasing her salary from 170,000, $7,205 to 180,749 effective next pay period.
That's not 2%. 2% would have been 3,600, thereabouts.
Uh, what were we talking about?
I'm just saying, it's, the numbers are not right.
Well, I don't know numbers anyway, but anyway, let's do it 2%.
So we have a motion on the floor from-
To increase it by 2%.
Commissioner Perkins, we want to increase the sheriff's pay by 2% effective next-
Pay period.
Do I have a second on that? Once again, we have a motion on the floor, that we have a second to increase the sheriff's pay by 2%. Okay, that motion failed. Any other comments?
No. If you don't mind, I'd like to offer my next motion.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Re-adjourn.
Second.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote.
I bet you they vote for that one. I did vote, I did vote and pushed it.
Okay, thank you.